They were, I had people in the convertible.
Six thirty PM, October second, two thousand nineteen, I'd like to call tonight's session of the City of Delaware Planning Commission to order. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Present.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Proll?
Here.
Mr. Vonek?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
Here.
Uh, next item on our agenda is going to move to next month, uh, per the email we received. So, we will handle it at that time.
And he does send his apologies, I believe you all.
No worries, I've received his note and understand his situation.
Two new kids, little hard.
Totally understand and respect that. Uh, item number three, the approval of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on September fourth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed, what's the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Proll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Abstain.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to regular business, could the clerk please read item four into the record? I assume we need to read it into the record and then...
No, I don't think we need to read Collins Cross scene, it just remains on the table.
Okay, then we can skip down to item B. Could the clerk please read item B into the record?
Two thousand nineteen dash two zero seven six, a request by Sawmill Delaware Investments for approval of a combined preliminary and final development plan to construct a new building, Innovation Center, at one oh nine Innovation Court, on approximately six acres, zoned M one PMU, light manufacturing district with a planned mixed-use overlay district.
Okay.
Brief presentation, uh, this site is, uh, north of Sawmill Road, it's actually north of Cemetery One, which we approved a few years ago, and actually this building's gonna be similar, same owner, same size, they just wanna mirror it, apparently they were successful with that one, so they wanna move forward with, uh, this one. Site's fairly vacant, uh, from an engineering perspective, we're reviewing the engineering drawings as we speak. The access to the site would be from Innovation Court from Sawmill Road, there'd be two access points, one to the south and one to the north. The north one would be for, uh, the employees and patrons, the south one would be for the trucks. Uh, the southern portion of the building's actually loading docks in that area. Also, there is, uh, on the western portion, be fire department access, on the western portion of the site, it would be chained off, where the cars and trucks couldn't go past, just for, they'd have a chain that the fire department would have access to. And also, because they own the building to the south, they were gonna connect, uh, the parking lot in this area also, where the fire departments can go around both buildings. The intent, doesn't show on this plan, but that's the intent after discussions with those. So indicate, it's a sixty thousand square foot building, it would have ninety-two parking, actually ninety-three parking spaces, which should accommodate the office, manufacturing, and, uh, warehouse use. Uh, there'd be ten units, uh, there, each unit would have a, as I said, a truck dock, dock and access on the southern portion of the site. Patron to go to the north end of the site, uh, retention pond would be on the western portion of the site, in that area. Uh, no trees are being removed on this site, so they don't have to meet the tree removal requirements. Uh, landscaping, they'd have, uh, street trees, front yard trees, interior parking lot landscaping, foundation landscaping, they achieve compliance, uh, with those requirements. From a lighting perspective, they would have, uh, five, they'd have twelve wall packs, seven on the north and five on the south. There'd be no light poles in this development. Uh, they'd have to achieve compliance with the airport overlay district. And the building itself would be similar to Cemetery One, be a metal building. Uh, you know, as I said, the southern portion of truck docks, the north would have five entrances, uh, commercial entrances into the site, into the building. Staff recommends approval with eight conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess my only comment is, you know, what to do with all those semis and the trailers that are always parked down there.
On Sawmill Parkway?
Yeah, right on the corner there, um, you know, if you're going to come right off of that section, there's...
When I was out to the site a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that also.
They're, I take, what they're there for, uh, uh, associated or Domtar now, closed down their Waco, Texas. They're moving it all up here. They are renting space someplace around here, and they're gonna move their storage out of their plant over to there. So those trucks right now have that storage and also the equipment that's being brought up from Waco to set in there. Those will go away, they're just...
They've been there for a while, I mean, we drive them on forty-two all the time, you look at it, it's like, it's lined up there.
I know, but they are also increasing their employment over there, okay? They're doing everything that the City of Delaware says they want as far as industrial, okay? And, so it, but along with that comes expansion problems, 'cause they've no room to expand. They are absolutely full, there's no capacity for an addition on that property. Uh, so, you know, it's just one of those things that, that, if the city wants to continue to grow and have their employers grow, once in a while, you're gonna run into the stumbling block. Nobody figured Waco was gonna shut down, and they, boom, that was it.
And the extra building that they had built, they put, they took all of their materials, which are also in those trucks, until they can get everything moved, so...
When I say they shut the plant down, they shut it, everything down. So, you know, and, and they've been having hiring fairs out there, I go out there, I see it, right? And I know so many people out there. No, but they're, you know, they're, it's, they're what Delaware wants as far as a plant that's expanding and wants to stay here. Exactly what we want.
As long as they can work with whatever's gonna develop that land, 'cause I mean, that's, that's right there, I mean, there's no...
They'll work with it, they'll work with it. They understand the problem, but then, you know, we have to understand...
There's no moving stuff with those all right on that kind of...
Well, and, and it's every time they build a building like this out there, everybody else has to suffer, because they've got the trucks coming in and the concrete trucks and the construction, it's just part of growth. You know, it's, I always say, it's like our streets, every time they do it, Central Avenue becomes a parking lot, okay? It seems like that's a favorite spot, and then out there at the point two. I mean, you must, you know, but that's, I don't know, I wish they had a better answer for growth. Tons of money years ago, we could've put the out, the bypass out, you know, so... So, in, in all fairness, I think we understand that's what's going on out there. It's not gonna continue, they just gotta, already put in so many pieces of equipment at a time.
Any other questions for staff? I'll invite the applicant to come forward to the podium if they wanna speak. Just state your name and your, uh, address for the record.
Amy Beyonce Helfman, eighty-four hundred Industrial Parkway, Plain City, Ohio, four three zero six four.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add to, uh, staff's presentation?
Um, no, I don't think so. This, uh, building is gonna be very much like the Cemetery Two building, it's, you know, the, the concept is the same, the type of tenants that we hope to attract are the same. We're working very closely with Sean Hughes, uh, he actually has a few potential tenants for us right now, that are interested in the building, you know, before we've even gotten started, so... We, uh, certainly hope that we can proceed forward and be able to, uh, you know, attract further development for Delaware.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Do you have any tenants for this building yet, or is it all spec?
We don't have any tenants yet, it's all spec. Uh, but we, like I said, Sean has been working very close with, closely with us, in fact, we're hoping in the next, uh, ten days or so to meet with a tenant that may take at least half of the building.
That's great. Is Cemetery Two full?
Cemetery Two is full. And, uh, and doing very well, and, uh, and there's quite a diversity of, uh, diverse group of tenants that are there.
Mm-hmm.
Lot of manufacturing and exactly what we, you know, what we were hoping to attract.
What's the range of space that you're, that's being occupied out there?
Most of the tenants, well, we, we have anywhere from Guild, who has eighteen thousand square feet, to, um, some six thousand square foot, like Cam at the other end is six thousand square feet. But we wanted to, you know, we've designed this building so that it could go to one ten, uh, from one to ten tenants, depending on, you know, how it splits up. But we're finding that there's a, seems to be a lot of demand for that twelve, six to twelve thousand square foot market, and not a lot of product in the area.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any members of the public here this evening who wish to speak on this particular case? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Move to approve request twenty nineteen twenty seven six, with any staff conditions?
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, first reading for this will be the council?
Fourteen.
October fourteen, okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Perhaps. Alright, moving on to item C under regular business, could the clerk please read that into the record?
Item C, two thousand nineteen dash zero six four two, a request by Gordon LLC for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for Winterbrook Place containing two hundred and sixty-three single-family lots on approximately a hundred point six acres, zoned R three PMU. One family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road, just east of the Belmont Place subdivision.
I'm gonna give you some history of this, back in, uh, June of this year, we approved the rezoning, conditional use permit preliminary development plan for this two hundred and sixty-three, uh, single-family lot subdivision. Now, the next step is the preliminary subdivision plat, and it's pretty straightforward. It mirrors what was approved back in, uh, June. Uh, the engineering department's reviewing the engineering plans as we speak. This is, uh, the plan that was approved, this is actually also the plat. If you remember, the access point would be from Peach Blow Road, be, uh, actually a roundabout that the county would construct. Winterborne Drive would be extended north to, uh, communities of Glen Ross, which would, uh, meet that location. There would be a stubb street to the west that would make its way to Belmont Place, and also there would be a stubb to the east to potentially feature Evans Farm, uh, development out there. The layout is really, Winterborne Place is the divider, there's a hundred and six lots east, a hundred and fifty-seven lots west. There's three types of lot sizes in this development. There'd be twenty-one eighty-foot lots there on the northwestern portion of the site, adjacent to communities of Glen Ross. There would be a hundred and thirty sixty-five foot lots, they would be in the, in this area, be the darker green, and there would be a hundred and twelve fifty-two foot lots that'd be in the lighter, uh, color in this area for entire development. Uh, the setbacks would be twenty-five foot front yards, thirty-foot rear yards, would be consistent with the adjacent subdivisions. Uh, any patios, decks, and the like could extend fifteen feet into the rear yard setbacks per the development text. The eighty-foot lots would have a minimum two thousand square foot house. The sixty-five foot lots would have a minimum eighteen hundred square foot house, and the fifty-two foot lots would have a minimum sixteen hundred square foot house for a one-story, and the two-story'd be eighteen hundred square foot. Uh, the one lot here, and I discussed this with the applicant, lot one twenty-seven would have to be widened about five or six more feet than meet our code for oversized lots. There'd be four detention basins, three would be along Peach Blow Road, there would be one in the northwest portion of the site. Approximately twenty-five acres, this is open space and nine reserve areas. Uh, mounding and landscaping would be required along Peach Blow Road to match, uh, Belmont Place, and also the same along Winterborne Place, that would match what's occurring in the communities of Glen, Glen Ross for consistency purposes. From a bike path and pedestrian path route, uh, a bike path would be required along the north side of Peach Blow Road to match Belmont Place, and also you'd have a bike path on both sides of Winterborne, uh, Drive to match what's occurred in communities of Glen Ross. The open space plan, as I indicated, there's about twenty-five acres of open space, just over fourteen is what we consider active open space. Uh, the Reserve A, I think it's around eleven acres, is just, uh, east of the entrance. It has the two deep retention ponds, it has a bike path through it. The primary open space is just west of the entrance. It's about six acres, but only about two and a half acres is active, and that would be just west of the entrance. I think you'd have a picnic table, you have a shelter, you'd have bocce ball, and you have, uh, the, uh, bike path in that area. You'd have a smaller open space by point six acres, uh, just, uh, just north of the stubb street into Evans Farms to the west. You'd have a park, about a one-acre pocket park in this area, which would have tot lots and the like, and there'd be the final open spaces in this area, and it'd be, it'd have similar uses of tot lot and bike path, and, uh, actually have a retention pond in that area. During the final development plan process, we would need those, uh, programmed with specific amenities as we move forward. From a tree preservation perspective, they preserved over eight hundred and fifty more trees than they took out, caliper inches, so for the development text, they're fine. From our perspective, uh, lighting plans would be required for each, uh, for each section and phase of the plat and plan. Uh, the development would have to meet all fire department requirements, uh, and they're, at this point, they're proposing to, uh, construct this development in, uh, seven phases. Uh, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with twenty conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, and, and it's always bothered me a little bit. We have about twenty-five point five acres of open space for park space.
Correct.
And I understand that about fourteen point twenty-two or thirteen percent is active.
Correct.
So I'm saying the rest of it must be water. Is that a fair statement?
It's probably water and some setback areas and the like.
So, how come water is concerned, considered park space, since there's no active use of it? Most of them I've seen have no swimming, no fishing, no this, no this, no that.
Right.
Why is that, and, and they're, they are demanded by the city, which is right, because of runoff. They have to control the runoff.
Correct.
I just don't, I never could understand, and I, I brought it up years ago, and I bring it up again, why a retention pond is considered park space?
Well, I think in this case, because it's around the active park space, some of these areas, it...
Well, there's one, two, three, there's three of them anyways.
Yeah, sorry.
I can see from my bad eyes from back here. I, I, now, the question is, why is a retention pond that is demanded by the city, just like streets and sidewalks, is considered park area?
Well, it's within area that they're considering a reserve. It's within area that they're considering a reserve, in that area around the, in this case, two of these parks, the, the area around the retention ponds in these two areas is considered active open space, so they...
I, I know it's open space, but I'm, I'm just, if, if the pond could be used for recreation,
Right.
I understand it being park space.
Mm-hmm.
It can't be used for recreation. I just don't understand...
I agree with you, in these instances, they're not using them for recreation, correct.
Is that by code, by city code, that we accept that?
Well, it's, it's in the area where we have active park space. So it's, it's, we, we accept the park space, it's, it's owned by the homeowners association. It's not owned by the city. We require it to be open to the city residents, however.
But the city says you have to have so much park space, depending on the size of it.
Right. In some, in, in the planned development like this...
But it doesn't have, so, that could all be, someone could basically come in and say that my park space for this thing is all retention ponds.
We, we would, we would ensure that, we'd require some of it to be programmed. And, and the areas that we have programmed with, you know, benches and bocce ball and the like, are, just happen to be around retention ponds.
So you go to A, and you say we have park space down there. Part of it's overhead power lines that couldn't be built on no matter what.
Correct.
And the other biggest part of that is ponds, and that's a park space.
Correct.
I don't, don't mean to cause problems, but I just don't understand how land that can't be used for recreation is park space. And those retention ponds cannot be used for recreation. Tell me I can take my little paddle boat in there, okay?
You could, but you're not.
Well, I'm saying, I, I, I go around a lot of places where I'm out walking, and I see signs, no fishing, no swimming, which, which, it's just a good idea, don't get me wrong, you know, and I keep on thinking, that's park space.
So if I hear you correctly, we should take, your suggestion is we take out the retention ponds out of the active areas, then...
I think it should be taken out of the park area.
At least though that, and, and following up with Mr. Halter, I, I agree, I think we talked about, for this specific one, a concept and even at the preliminary, active space. And that is still my concern on this one is what I see as lack of active space. If the main active space is on that front corner off the roundabout, for two hundred and sixty-three homes, to me, that, that is a very small usable area, particularly with all the trees, which should be, you know, should stay in there.
They're preserving as many trees as they can, you're correct about that.
I, I just think the city needs to re-look at this.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and, and let people know that it's really only fourteen, fourteen point twenty-two percent act-
Active, correct.
Actual active space. And the other is boom.
Alright.
Alright? I just, I, you know, I, I don't think, a lot of people give any consideration, they just say, oh, twenty-five percent, that's pretty good. But then when you look at that,
Right.
You think, where are these kids gonna play?
Right.
You know, I mean, it, I don't think that, they don't make fences around those ponds, so you're gonna have your kids playing that one strip in there that's got water.
It's got power line through it with a bike path.
Huh?
It's the power line with the bike path.
Yeah, not much playing in that one.
There's limited, it's similar to Belmont Place, this is comparable to Belmont Place in active area.
Well, I just...
No, only in percentage, their active area is off a main area, though, that's accessible. On this one, that little tot lot in the top right, which is the northeast corner, and then on the northwest corner, those are only accessible really for those homes right there.
For those areas, if you're correct.
On Belmont Place, that is, that active space is small, but it's right off the main thoroughfare where all people can access it off the bike path.
That is correct.
So that is a very big difference. On this one, if you're, as they stage it, those final stages for those little ones won't even be in, in effect for multiple, multiple years. That's why I say on this one, I don't think the active space is enough, if that's where it's supposed to be in that front corner.
It's, it's the front corner here and in this area, yeah, it's these two areas.
And where you're saying, that front corner where they're gonna have the bocce balls and then all that?
It's gonna be in this area.
That's so close to Peach Blow Road with the roundabout, are there gonna be fences around it? I mean, how can that be safe at all? Peach Blow's really gonna get busy here real quick.
That's why I think when we, when they program it, we have to get in more detail of if there are any, you know, if that activity's too close to the roundabout, do we move it a little further away? It's similar to what up in Glen Ross, we had the, you remember, we had the hills, for sliding, we pushed those further north to get them off Cheshire Road, and we did that during the next process, not the, the original preliminary plat approval. And each one of those came in separately, or that whole park area came in separately. That spanned, I think, two or three sections, actually.
We used to be really concerned about the park spaces, and, and, and I can go over a lot of places in Delaware, done years ago, that, that park space was, if, if it was five acres, it was all usable. There was no water in it, it was five acres of usable ground. We could put basketball, or we could put, you know, swing sets, or whatever it was, for the kids to go out there and play. Alright? I don't see a single spot in there that I'd feel comfortable letting my kids go over there around that water and play football, or a little bit kicking a soccer ball around. I just don't see where it's, and, but, you know, and I think that's something the city needs to look at under its codes. I don't think it's fair for us just to change it right here on the fly. But I think going forward, the city really needs to look at this park space, and make sure it is usable, open park space,
Clearly defined.
that everybody can use. That is not usable.
I think we gotta define usable better, I don't disagree with you. Our co, our code now is pretty general, ten or twenty percent usable.
Yeah, that's what should be made clear, is that we want X amount of percentage of usable park space, not including, now, these are retention, so they'll hold water all the time, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I just, you know, mosquitoes would be bad.
That's why we've gone in the past years, since I've been here great length, to make sure they're programmed appropriately, to make sure they have uses, because our code isn't specific on what needs to be programmed in each area.
Yeah, I, I think the city should look at that, and, 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 you know, we've done a lot of stuff with our codes, and I think that's definitely something we should, they should seriously look at a description of usable park space.
I agree, I, but I take each one as they come along, I don't make it up on the fly, and I don't think there'd be a change on this one, since it's a, a lot of the other ones have already been in process, so you're kind of adding two, but this one being in and of itself a new development for the entire acreage.
No, I agree with you.
And I, I am disappointed in the lack of what I would consider active space for that development.
Yeah, I think it's unfair to throw it on this one, okay? If they would like to voluntarily make some changes, it'd be great, you'd appreciate it, but I don't think it's, I don't think I could turn it down. I'm just saying the city needs to look at it. I'd like to see a very serious, if we look at our codes, that's, we take serious look at that one. Take care of that, will you?
I think some of the other concerns we had were, was there going to be fencing on the northwest part where the retention to the tot lot? I think we had that concern as well, that, yep.
Between the, the water?
Yep, between the water and, and the, uh, whatever gets programmed in there.
I, I agree with you, I think there should be, yes, I, I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with on that, and I think we can ask for that here. I don't think it, I think that's a safety issue more than...
Uh, I think it makes sense to address the programming of that when they come in for that section of the plan.
There's not that much fencing there, we're just asking them to fence off the pond. So when the kids are out there playing, they kick the ball, the ball won't go in the water, and they won't have a tendency to go down there. That's all, I, you know, I don't think that's a big...
They're making a tall fence if they're gonna kick it, sometimes kids can kick the ball pretty high.
My, the, and I'm still stuck on this, it, I think it's lot eighty-four with so much of an easement under that power line. I've talked about the concept, talked about the preliminary.
It's this one here?
Yep. That, I, I'm not comfortable still with that large amount, it looks like it's cutting through almost forty percent. I get it, it's an easement, it's not the actual lines, however, putting in that to the center point is not that far away on that lot.
Right. Actually, for graphic purposes, I put this up here, it's easier to read, it's the plan. This is the actual plat in black and white, they did make this area, this is the lot you're talking about, they did move that, it appears they moved that out and made that tot lot a little more rectangular, north and south more than, and moved it out easement in this area.
And maybe on yours, but not on, not on mine.
No, it, it's still cutting across the bridge.
Yeah, on eighty-four it is, you're right.
Eighty-four is still all the way...
And I'm not sure those people buy that lot and build a house, then come in and wanna put a shed or fence across there, and somebody says, well, there's an easement, you can't.
Right.
You know, I'm, and, and I know that partly through the process, I really do believe that the Realtor or the builder tells them that, but it kinda goes in one ear and out the other. And then the second buyer comes along and buys the house, and they don't know about it, and then all of a sudden, you know, they're standing in front of city council screaming and yelling, which is a good place for them.
You can, you can add that condition, if that's what you wanna, if you question the...
Yeah, actually, that, that's a lot of lot to lose there
It is.
on an easement. I mean, that lot is practically unbuildable, I, I believe, I, I think it'd be just easiest to slide that into the park land there. Of course, I don't own the property, so I... Of course, I don't own the property, so I guess it changes for me to say.
Any other questions for staff? I'll invite the applicant to come forward to the podium. If you could just state your name and address for the record, once you reach the microphone.
My name's Bob Girdon, uh, one zero five nine oh, Wellington Boulevard, Powell, Ohio, four three oh six five.
Uh, Jack Brickner, twenty-seven fifteen Brighton Drive, Powell, Ohio.
Um, just to kind of go through some of the comments that we've heard, um, I, I know this was talked about before, our engineer, and, and Jack has an engineering background, and he can say this as well, but there's actually shelves on those basins for the reason that they're about two feet deep, and they're out about eight to ten feet, I think.
Yes. What they referred to as safety shelves, as part of the engineering on the basins for protection. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not, my opinion is, I don't know that fencing is gonna do any good. Kids will go under, kids will climb over it, kids will kick the ball over it. Um, it's only gonna be limited in a part of, you're looking at, put it in a part, uh, of where the, the open space uh, abuts the pond. I'm not sure that that's typically been done in the city, and not sure that that's gonna be a benefit for the safety of someone that may be there.
I see it as a visual reminder. Uh, that's all well and good until there's snow, and the snow is covering, and then it's not, then that visual reminder, you know, the fence is the visual reminder. The step downs are not really there under, under certain types of weather conditions, whether it's later at night, getting dusk, that type of thing. So during the day, I agree, but I think the visual reminder, uh, is what I would consider fencing to be. Not a permanent, you know, it stops somebody from going anywhere, or a ball going through, or anything like that. I think it's the visual reminder that I like to see with those kind of, particularly with that area, if you're talk, calling it like a tot lot, where the kids there are, you know, age two, three, four, five, that type of thing. So that's my opinion. I, I think it's the visual, don't discount the visual part of the fencing.
Would, would a three rail fence or something make sense?
You know, it's similar to what you see, like, uh, as you move north into the Glen Ross, there's those, is that what they are, three rail, the little white ones? I can't remember. And I live there, so I should tell you that.
Do these have, do those have the fences around the detention areas also?
They do now, if you're on the south side, yes. Yep. But again, they're not meant to like stop somebody. You know, you can crawl under, you can go over top, or something like that. It, it's just that visual barrier.
There's potential too, around the basins anyways, that you're gonna require, there may be required some sort of barrier. And as the case of Glen Ross, we've used a three rail fence, um, with gaps with landscaping. So it all depends upon the proximity of Peach Bowl, or other roadways, and how close the basin is in final design. And we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but it is part of the design manual. So in Glen Ross's case, they just use that same product and put it in other places. So I have, just wanna put out, that out there in case you might actually need barrier otherwise in other parts of this, um, subdivision.
As far as the comment on, on Lot eighty-four and the easements, um, Ja- Jack will talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, those, those overhead lines, that, that's a hundred and foot, a hundred and fifty foot easement, and those lines are not a hundred and fifty feet wide. So there's a lot of that easement that doesn't have the high tension lines above it. So it's not like, you know, those lines are a hundred and fifty feet apart. Um, and, and as Jack mentioned to me also, that there's easements throughout the whole subdivision. Um, utility easements, drainage easements, sanitary easements, that people won't be able to utilize just like that easement across the back of their yard. That's, that's not the only easement that is gonna be on everybody. There's every, there, there are gonna be a lot of lots in there that are gonna have easements on it, for different, different varieties.
I, I understand that, okay?
But only one.
But I guess my concern is on Lot eighty-four.
Yeah.
They'll have more restrictions on what they can do back in that area than Lot eighty-five. I'm not talking about the power lines. The power lines are gonna be in there. But wherever there's an easement, there are certain things you can't do back there. You can't build this back there, you can't put this back there. I'm not sure about fences, but I mean, there are things that you can't do uh, on that easement.
That, that's correct, and we're not disagreeing with you on that.
So he's got, Lot eighty-four has more restrictions than Lot eighty-five.
There, there'll be other lots in there that'll have less restrictions. Some will have more than one lot. If, if you look at all the, all the easements that are gonna be on any specific lot, any lot in there is probably gonna have five or six easements on it. Some may have four, some may have six, some may have seven. Uh, it depends on, for example, the underground electric. Uh, most of the time, the underground electric is put in the rear yards of the homes, that, that feed a lot. So you could have lots that butt each other internal to the project that have, both of them had underground or electric easements on them, but the lot right across the street will not have an electric easement on it. So there's all kinds of restrictions that are.
How far in does that easement go on eighty-four?
That's the question.
You know? I can't tell. I have no idea in the world.
The lots are a hundred and thirty feet.
It's gotta be more than seventy foot, seventy foot.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, just based on the line, on a hundred and thirty-one feet deep, you're at forty percent.
It's a third of it, or quarter of it.
Thirty-nine and a half feet in.
The sheer size of the easement is the issue in one area. Cause I have a ten foot easement.
Are there any lots that have a thirty-nine foot easement in the back?
Pardon me?
Are there any other lots that have a thirty-nine foot easement in the back?
Uh, I don't know, we haven't gotten in, that may show up on the detail of the engineering. It's also at an angle to the lot. It's not the entire width of the lot, it's only in that one corner of the lot.
Shane, I don't know if you have, if you, if, the, the plan that asked submitted, do you know what that, uh, from the scale, what that?
I don't know what that means.
It's right here.
I understand the setbacks on any lot. I know we have a front setback, a rear setback, side setbacks, all that. And there, ten, fifteen, on the front, they may be more than that. But we're talking close to, what, what'd you think, about thirty-nine foot? Is that, you're, you're just kind of guessing. I'm, but someplace in that neighborhood, that's a lot of setbacks.
Well, it's only the setback in that back right corner. It's not the, that, that electric line does not parallel the rear property line. It's at an angle too. And I think if you probably go through the city, or go through southern Delaware County, there's a lot of homes, a lot more expensive than these homes, well, not knocking these homes, cause these would be expensive also, that, that butt up to the overhead lines, butt up to the electric. Go, their, their properties go into the electric easement. And, and granted, there are controls from AEP, what goes there, but there are controls for all the other easements that are in place also. There'll be, there'll be easements on virtually every one of these lots for sanitary. There'll be easements on every one of these lots.
Oh, yeah.
But their footprint's smaller. It's usually what the, I think that's what the crux is, is those easements, footprints are generally ten feet, and they may run parallel to the property, or do something. And you know then, oh, that's the area that's taken up. This takes a, a rectangle and makes it a different shape. That whole back, that whole backside there.
What can't they build back?
I think that's what the concern is, is we understand that those easements exist, and, but those easements are, here's my electrical underground easement, here's my sewer easement, here's my water easement, and now I've lost fifty feet of my backyard. They're generally not like that. They may crisscross, they may do some things. Uh, that are funky, but they're planned in such a way that they're not dicing up a backyard, and I think that's what, or the backside of the lot, right?
Okay, so how wide is this easement? A hundred and fifty feet?
They're a hundred and thirty feet.
A hundred and thirty, okay. That's, how wide is the easement? How wide is the easement?
Fifty feet.
Fifty?
One hundred and fifty.
Okay, and then you've got wires that run in the middle of that?
Yes.
Okay. So if they had to work on it, they've got enough room to get back there on either side. You could probably build something underneath it. You've got a hundred and fifty feet, you have to get up there and work on it? An easement doesn't mean you can't build on it. It means if they have to come in and work on it, and remove it, they don't have to put it back.
Exactly.
Just like the easement for electric in the backyard, you can put a fence back there.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if they need to go back there and move your fence, guess what?
That's the risk.
You have to put it back up, they don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I put a fence back there so I keep my dogs and kids in the yard, and then they have to work on it, and they have to come in there for some reason. I don't know, but they've got the easement. And I find out they're tearing out my fence, and I call and say, hey, who's gonna put that fence back? You are.
Right.
Oh, well, listen, this wonderful, who forgot to tell me this deal? I'm, I'm trying to save problems for that particular lot owner if that comes along. I mean, I understand, you know, a lot of it, but that's just a big.
You're gonna have the same situation where you have a sanitary, electric, a gas, a telephone, all the drainage easements. Um, it's the same difference. If you put a fence over a drainage easement, and the city has to go in and, and do repair on, on a line, or reswell an area, and you've put trees there, and you've put fences there, you're tough luck when they come in to take it down.
But you know you have a six or seven foot, or ten foot easement on the back of the property.
Ninety-five percent of the people don't know that.
Well, you know, I, I, I agree with you. You're absolutely right. And shame on them. But now we've got a bigger hunk there. I just, I, I just think it's, once again, you know, I, if, if the city has approved it, or felt it was okay, I just don't, I feel sorry for Lot eighty-four homeowner. Not so much the first one, it's the second one. They're the ones that get caught on it. And it's like when we approve a fence, we say it's gotta have so much landscaping outside the fence, and then that homeowner sells, and go up Hawk Road and see how many of them have it. And when you contact the news, which they've done, the new homeowner, and they say, what? I gotta do what down here?
That's, I, I don't think you can protect everybody from everything. I think that's impossible. Um, so, but that's.
If I might, I'm like the fifth owner in my house, and I was told when I bought the house that my fence was five foot into a ten foot utility easement. I was told, title, title insurance company told me that. So it's not just the first owner that's gonna know.
And it depends what type of easement is what's allowed in them. From the electric company to the city easements, to the private easements. It, each, each situation is a little different.
And it's not something that's gonna be dug up because the wires are above. So they would just need access. They wouldn't go in and with a truck and tear down a fence. They would, you know, move the, move the truck over a little bit to, to have access to the wires. So it's not like an underground easement. It's an above easement, so they necessarily wouldn't be tearing down any, any structures that were allowed in that easement.
The owner of Lot eighty-four, just to pick up off, says the, the owner of Lot eighty-four may be more aware of there's an easement because they can see the lines, they can see the, the power poles, as opposed to an underground drainage easement, underground water line. Uh, you, you, you can't see that because it's underground. I would just say, you know, looking at the angle, you know, you, on the, the forms we are, you're a lot closer to that center mark. You know, if it's a hundred and fifty feet, and you're looking at a center line, that you are a lot closer on that back edge than I think, than, than you might not realize. And it's hard to say with, with what we look at right here, but, I mean, that could be ten feet to the edge of the property, not, you know, not seventy-five.
You're about thirty-nine feet closer to the power line.
You know, and if you have a center line of seventy-five on a one fifty easement, and you're on that back corner lot, you know, that could easily be ten, fifteen feet to the corner.
Keep all the structures to one side of the lot, so you've got more depth to build.
Just take Lot eighty-four and add it to the park space.
Where are that?
Problem solved. We talked about this before in the preliminary.
That wasn't my concerns.
And just to remind you, this will be back in front of you again for final engineering approval as well. This is just the preliminary plat.
I, I, I hope we don't have to go through this one again. Yeah, I really do. I, I think, you know, I just don't like it. And that's, you know, the ponds I can live with because that was what the city required, okay? But that Lot eighty-four, I'm just, you know, I got a problem with that lot. I don't know. And maybe I shouldn't.
The, I think the last thing we talked about was the, um, the surrounding of the Gundling property. Um, did, did anyone meet with them to see whatever their concerns were? And does it, whatever the landscaping you've got proposed for those, I think it's like two seventeen around the corner, is that meeting?
Yeah, the, the plan, we approved the, uh, preliminary development plan back in June. That plan, we discussed with Gundlings. We had their landscape architect submit it again. It meets those requirements. That's the condition in here is the same as in the ordinance that approved the final development plan. So if you go back to the, that, that ordinance, like nineteen thirty-one has the details of the plan that was approved. And we had those discussions with the adjacent owners. And we have it specific in those approvals for that ordinance. Because these came at different times, that's why the plan does, isn't the same time as the plat. I think there was an issue when he, when they submitted this, the plat is fairly expensive. And he wanted to ensure he got the rezoning, the preliminary development plan approved before he spent, I think this was probably twenty thousand dollars, his application for plats. So that's why the plat is following the plan in this case.
I believe it's documented as condition ten.
Well, but we have that condition. Everything, everything that was approved then would be required here. These are the same conditions.
Now, by any chance, did any of you, did either of you talk with the Gundling people after the June to see if that, you know, if they're okay with that, uh, you know, that type of conversation?
I, I spoke with them after the meeting.
Okay.
And, um, said, you know, it's been approved, whatever they agreed to, um, here and also in front of city council, after the city council meeting, and that, that was approved. Um, there was a lot of discussion about exactly where the trees were gonna be, where the mounding was gonna be. There was a drawing that was drafted, um, that Mr. Gundling, and as an attorney, were okay with and accepting of in city council. So there, there's been a approved drawing that they are aware of, and, and I think Lance has put that in so many words into the, into the comments, and that, that'll be incorporated into the final landscape plan when we do final engineering for that face.
There was an addendum to the, the city council action that showed the revised landscape plan. That was agreed upon by both entities, both owners.
Sounds good. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Are there any members of the public here this evening that wish to comment on this particular case? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I'll move to approve twenty nineteen oh six four two with all staff recommendations.
Motion.
Oh, did I not? I'm sorry, I might have not updated the, uh.
Oh, that was that email change. Okay. Uh, move to approve twenty nineteen two one three six. With all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
A second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
No.
Mr. Proll?
No.
Mr. Vonek?
No.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansour?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
What did it do?
Okay.
Uh, first reading will be on the fourteenth, and I would anticipate.
Uh, first reading will be on the fourteenth, and I would anticipate this would probably be three readings in total. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number five on tonight's agenda, the planning director's report.
Uh, right now, next month, we have three cases. Collins Crossing, uh, will be in front of us, come off the table. Uh, the Enclaves at the Ravines at Old and Tangue is a eighty-seven lot, uh, two-family development, similar to the Enclaves out here on Hawk Road. What's that?
That's a heck of a name, how are they going to fit that on the sign?
I don't know, hopefully, they reduce that name, or that's what I'm calling it now, I don't know. Then the Dr. Green on Hall Road is, on Hall Drive, is going to do a, about an eight hundred square foot expansion that would include more parking. So we'll see that as a combined preliminary final development plan.
That'll make those neighbors so happy.
Yeah, awful.
He's extending it. It's true.
Should be if I'm up then.
Should be. It could be.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
All right, commission member comments and discussion, start over here, and we'll just sweep right around.
Well, I just, I don't understand holding up a whole subdivision for one lot that has a little bit, a little bit of a problem. I, I think the owner can deal with that if they want to, or the lot will sit there vacant forever, and I just, that's why I made the motion to move it forward. But I just, I just don't see, I'm not sure the planning commission ought to be making decisions on a one lot issue.
The, I'll follow that comment, my disagreement is on the active space. That there's not enough active space for those two hundred and sixty-three homes, which is going to have over five hundred kids. So, and it had been, it didn't have to do specifically with one lot. It's the active space, I think we are still forgetting here, that Mr. Halter mentioned at the beginning. Um, I do have a couple of things, I was following up with Dave on it, just to let everybody else know. The office Cheshire, there's a fire access road that leads into the southern new developments and stuff like that. And it's a Polte development, and he's getting with Polte, because the, the fire access road is being used pretty much daily by construction traffic and stuff like that, so.
I've spoken with Jeff Thompson of Polte, and he had committed to pulling up bollards, the flexible posts. Um, I had anticipated that that work would be done by now, I will follow up tomorrow on the status of that.
It definitely hasn't been done as of today, I'm.
Understood, thank you.
It's very disappointing.
Yeah. Um, the other one is just an update on the twenty-three near Peach Blow and Glen Parkway. Uh, that's a staff roof, they have cleared, there was two buildings right on the corner of twenty-three and Peach Blow, they've now cleared all those out, and they are now developing, you know, the, the, the infrastructure part of, like, those commercial outlets along the Glen Parkway, so they, they're moving, looks like they're moving along pretty good on that.
Nothing?
Well, yeah, I was wondering, is there anything going on with the Wesleyan Inn? That seems to have just stopped.
I thought that the other day.
He, he's looking at other options right now.
He what?
He's looking at other options right now.
Other options for it?
Yep.
After all that.
Yeah, right.
We, we, we will likely see it again.
Great ideas go to the graveyard of great ideas every day.
So it comes back again.
Yes.
Anything on the, the other hotel, is that dead?
I don't know.
Still in negotiations.
Is what?
Still in negotiations.
It's still in negotiations, okay. And the third one, which would be over there by the police station, is that still in negotiation?
Yeah.
Okay, answers all those questions, I'm done.
You know anything that you didn't know before?
I, I, I tell you what, I feel so relieved with all the information I have now.
Lots of negotiations.
When someone asks me what's going on, and I can tell them it's in negotiations.
You can negotiate things for decades.
No, I don't care, I just wonder, I, because they were hot, heavy to go, they were going to tear it down, and put the addition up, and have it open by whenever, and I thought, hmm, something's hit them.
Reality.
Yeah, cost against income.
It's called money.
Your turn.
Thanks, it's tough to follow it up.
It's tough to follow, by the way.
I don't want to make it easy on you.
No, actually, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the discourse that we had about, uh, the, the Girdon properties, and, and I know that, that's, we usually don't vote that way, but I just appreciate everybody's input. It's always good to hear differing points of view, so, thank you. Um, the other thing is that the Canes, I live out on that side of town, I actually live in Kensington Place, and the city has done a great job in managing that, this, I know, uh, my wife, what did she say, it was like Fury Road, Mad Max Fury Road, trying to get in there when you got into it, but they actually have done a really great job keeping the traffic not impacting that intersection at all. Maybe they wanted it a little bit, but I drive around rush hour, and I saw no impact, so. And it's a great addition to that side of town, it's packed all the time, but it still keeps moving. So the design was good, uh, they, they were able to keep everything out of the way, so, it's a great job.
Tails of chicken.
It's good, yeah, yeah, it's, it's an ingenious business model, you want like, two pieces of chicken, you want three pieces of chicken, you want six pieces of chicken, or you want chicken on a bun? Really, should have came up with that, so. But no, just, uh, kudos again for, uh, listening to our comments, and just all the design that you guys do, and work that you do. That could have been a problem, it wasn't, so, great job.
Okay. Yeah, I got to say, Raising Canes, I'll tell you what, I'm in the food business, and I'd like to know what they're putting in that chicken to get the lines that they have right, I mean, they've got like, police escorts out there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been an impressive operation for its first, it's the sauce, she's, it's the sauce. The chicken, no, the chicken by itself, mediocre, with the sauce, exceptional.
Actually, my favorite's the garlic toast.
Oh, yeah.
Texas toast.
Texas toast is the way to go. Anyway, you know, kudos to Canes, you know, they're going to bring people to that part of town, and that's great. Maybe it'll spur some more development, once people see the numbers that Canes is pulling down, because I guarantee they're doing more than they anticipated they were going to do in business.
Has to be, and those front lots are all available for that type of business, or additional businesses. The, uh, mattress firm got a new business, got some, like, classes, people, or something like that, yeah, yeah, sorry, I was using technical term, classes people. Um, so, but it's just cool to see that over on our side of town, where there, it's, it's open, so there's, there's opportunities.
As always, thank you to staff for all the, the work and effort that you guys put in for these meetings, it's appreciated. I know you're taking time away from your families to be here with us, and I want you to know, we appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
As the subject matter experts, and the people who make the, uh, the gears go round and round for us. So with that said.
We did see the email, the buddy from Dave, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm being patient, okay, thank you, sure.
So our next regular meeting, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, look forward to seeing you all there. If you can't make it, just let Elaine know. And with that, we shall adjourn at, uh, seven twenty-eight. Less than an hour, okay, less than an hour, not too bad.